Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024 Tom Water City Council Meeting. I am in shock that we're already in September. Good Lord. So with that, we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Liad Adalhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Councilmember Cathy, we didn't hear you.
I'm right here.
Okay.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Altuser.
He is excused this evening.
Councilmember, Councilmember Peter Agabi.
Present.
Councilmember Ken Kelly Van Holz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I am here. So with that, we will now do the flag salute. Follow me in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
All right, we have a couple of special items, and the first special item is Joint Animal Services Update. And Sarah Hawk is going to be doing that, and I believe you also have a PowerPoint presentation that you will be doing this evening. Oh, hold on, and I'll turn on the microphone. There you go.
I do have a PowerPoint today, and trust me, it's not as long as the one that you guys got handed in. Those that was for informational purposes. And so, good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you again for having me this evening. It's always a pleasure to talk to you about animal services. And so to kick us off, I always like to show this photograph to talk about what we do. So most people's perception of what we do is humane law enforcement, strays, licensing, and maybe some adoption. But what people don't see are all the programs, not just to help the animals in our care, but the animals within the community. So we provide a multitude of different programs that support the pets and people within our community. Some accomplishments of 2023. I know you guys have been hearing about our medical suite, which became operational last year. At the end of 2023, we had completed over 600 spay neuter surgeries, and as a year in June, on our year anniversary in June, we actually completed 1,000 surgeries in-house. So we're very excited. This is the first time we've ever had a veterinary team in-house. We've always been reliant on the community, veterinary community, to service all of our needs. We also did a lot of advocacy in 2023 with two bills specifically supporting HB 1424 concerning sale of dogs and cats within pet stores, as well as SB 1234, which really tightened up language around seizures of animals from neglect or cruelty cases, and made it very clear what the owner's rights were, as well as the seizing agencies to dues. There's a lot of words on here, and we're not going to go through them all, but what this sums up is that we also changed a position last year and hired a positive outcomes coordinator. The positive outcomes coordinator focuses specifically on outcomes that are not what we normally think of a positive outcome, like adoption or a return to owner. They focus on transfer partners, our community cat program, as well as our foster program. And so within one year of having this position, we increased our transfers by 77%. We doubled the number of foster homes and animals in foster, as well as more than quadrupled the number of community cats participating in our program. So some statistics for you guys tonight. We did experience a 20% increase over 2022 last year with the number of intakes. So we saw a significant drop during COVID, and it's every year afterwards, we have seen an increase back up in intake. This is just another way to look at it. So instead of looking at strays or owner surrenders, this is breaking it down by species with the majority of our intake being cats. These are some of our other positive outcomes. So we continue to increase the number of animals that are adopted through our facility, as well as transfer partners. Return to owner has decreased slightly, but that is actually because of our holistic work that we do within the community to prevent animals coming in from the first place. So if they can be reunited outside of the shelter without ever having to come, that is what we would prefer happen. Field response is also up. Just to highlight, Tom Water had a 36% increase over 2022 last year. So the numbers of calls that we are going on continuing, continue to increase year over year. And these are just a couple of stories of cases that we went out on last year. So this one is talking about a case that was a cat hoarding case of 157 cats that were pulled out of one house. We were able to actually find positive outcomes for all 157 cats, thanks to our transfer partners, fosters, as well as people willing to adopt. We also had a large-scale cruelty case with cockfighting in unincorporated Thurston County last year, where we took in 63 chickens, over 40 which were roosters that had been used for fighting. So they had been dubbed, meaning that their combs and wattles were cut off, and their spur had been altered or removed entirely to have weapons placed for fighting. And so we were also able to find positive outcomes for all 63 of those chickens as well, thanks to our transfer partners. And this last one is Reagan. This is a really great story because she was removed from a home for neglect. But turns out the home that she was in was from an ex-husband who had took her as punishment in domestic violence case. And so when the mom found out that we had her, she drove five states in 48 hours to come get her back. So some of the necessary improvements that have happened in the last two years, we had a major sewer replacement in 2023, which spanned over half of the building to replace some of the piping. It was the original cast iron that came from the building in the 1970s. And we also had to do a major kennel repair in our dog adoption area, where we had to replace all of the kennels. We're still operating with the same kennels that were installed when we moved into the building in 1996. Usually those should be replaced about every 10 years. One of the things that we've also had done was a capital facilities plan. This was tagged in along with City of Lacey's capital facilities plan, where their consultants actually said we were the second worst building within the city. So we are not operating at the capacity that we should because the building cannot house us any longer, nor are the repairs sustainable. It will currently take us $1.2 million of maintenance to the building just to stay operational next year. So that brings us to the space needs assessment that we are doing this year. We've hired Animal Arts, who specializes in building veterinary clinics, as well as animal shelters. And they are doing a deep dive into the assessment of kind of what the findings of the capital facilities plan was, but they're in the process of defining what a new shelter would look like. What is the size? What do we need for the programs that we offer, as well as the number of staff that we're housing and all of that for the next 20, 40 years, so that we're not looking at building a new building anytime soon again? We have also been looking at potential sites. This includes working with our jurisdictional partners. We've reached out to the Port of Olympia, Olympia School District, a great many different types of partnerships to look at if there's any sort of land that might be negotiated. There are some things that we're trying to keep in mind, though. And some of that is, and I use this graphic to just show, because a lot of suggestions have been made for us to move to South County. While the land, we would have more land, and land could possibly be cheaper, the issue becomes the dotted area is where the majority of our calls are. And so we want to make sure that we're maintaining within 60% of our calls, which is in that green area that's highlighted there. So we're really trying to stay about 15 minutes within City of Lacey limits, so that we're staying roughly within our service call area. And with that, I would invite City Council, if you have not been down to Joint Animal Services, I would invite the council, council to come take a tour and join us. But with that, do you have any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I know a while ago, we had talked about regarding like lead, law enforcement, assisted diversion, and touchpoints with community members who are going to go away for Medicaid assisted treatment and the pets, right? And then the capacity issue. If you got a, when you get a new space, could that be an option of housing or fostering those who are unable to care, if they're in treatment or respite, or?
It would probably have to be a combination program that also includes fosters, because housing within our facility is just not optimal. It is a possibility to consider, and we're not wholly against it. It's more about or like organizing and funding and all of that. Currently, we don't even have enough fosters to support our own foster program, let alone long-term fosters of that capacity. And that's where the issue lies. We do have an emergency housing program for those that are literally in an emergency. So they've been admitted to the hospital. There's no one to care for their pet. They've been arrested again, and so that one will do a four-day hold to allow either themselves or family members to figure something out. But that's currently the best that we've been able to do.
I will go to Councilmember Cathy and then Councilmember Swarthout.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight. I like to hear the good stories, and you coming here tonight, telling the Reagan story was worth your trip here. I mean, to see how much people love their pets and the kind of work you're doing is is phenomenal. I, I served on the board for a number of years back when, and I had to make sure that I didn't go anywhere near the, the dogs or the cats or the I asked where the board met, could I just walk in the door and go in? Because it's, it's hard for me to not come home with a pet. And anyway, I just want to tell you that you've, you're doing a very good job, and I can, I can see the difference that's being made from having been there previously and what you're doing now. And where does Reagan live?
She lives in Oklahoma.
She lives in Oklahoma, and her owner drove all this way to get her.
She did, and Reagan was a quirky girl. She had a lot of touch sensitivities, and she was older, so we used to joke that she was just, you know, a cranky older lady who knew what she wanted, and some of that was to only touch her and specifically the places that she wanted. And so she was going to be a tougher adoption. She didn't like other dogs. She couldn't be around cats, and so this was the ideal, perfect solution, right? Like, not only did we get to reunite a dog that probably shouldn't have been away from its original owner to begin with, but we were able to make sure that a dog that was going to be harder to place had a positive outcome at the end.
Very good, very good. Well, T-PUB's a good work, and Tom Water, we're, we're very supportive of, of your work, so. And we noticed that we're using it more. Our percentage is. So thanks again. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Councilmembers Swarthout.
Thank you. We had a chance to talk before. It's just been my heart for such a long time, as far as getting a new facility built, and we're such a caring community to figure out what that would look like to set facility has been there. I was sharing a story. My kids were in elementary school. They would take kids down to the shelter on a creative writing project, and so the kids would pick a dog, and we'd take them out for a walk or a cat. And then they'd write about it, and then it would be in the pic, they would take a picture, and it would be in the Olympian. So if you wanted to adopt a pet. So that was a million years ago. But I do appreciate like the Facebook that you're doing now, because they're very clever, very, very clever. Yeah, I bet that's brought in quite a bit of traffic, so.
We have handed the reins over to our younger generational staff member who understand how all the social media works. So I'm trusting the process.
Well, they always get me when they need food, so. You can donate, and it's very, very easy to do. You go to the Amazon website for the, for your wish list, and it's very, very easy to do. But yeah, I'm just really very excited if we could ever get a new facility for you all down there. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. Great. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Next item is the, and I have to say, I went to the ribbon cutting on this one this morning, or the, yeah, this morning, and it was great. I actually was at noon. Tom Water Retail and Tourism Visitor Center, and we have Chris Seg and David Perri Pereira, if you can go ahead and come to the podium and tell us all about this wonderful new project.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Again, my name is Chris Seg. I'm the new CTE Career and Technical Education Director for Tom Water School District. This is my colleague Dave Pereira. We had the honor of opening the Tom Water Retail and Visitor Center today, and we had Councilmember Swarthout present and Mayor Sullivan. That was great. I, it's a partnership between the Tom Water Area Chamber of Commerce, who hasn't always been the most substantial organization, but we are looking to, to grow that in this unique partnership. And it's also a partnership with the City of Tom Waters. We've met with, with several people from the city, and, and we're looking to grow that relationship as well. And so it's on one part a retail center, and it's a one part a visitor center. But most importantly, it is a, it is the primary work-based learning experience, both virtually and physically, for all students in Tom Water School District. So the uniqueness of the program is that when an organization, a business joins the chamber, they pay a membership. That membership goes into a foundation, which is funding what we're going to call a Tom Water Works, which is a youth employment program. So this focuses on, this will be focused on this summer for, for students that are credit deficient and low income to give them work experiences and also earn credit and college credit. A lot of this, this work that we're doing is to supporting our teachers and students in those classrooms. So it's supporting student work. So we will display and sell student work at the store, at the retail center. It is, like I said, everything that we're focused on is work-based learning for students. So bringing industry into the classroom and classroom out into the industry, creating opportunities for our students. We're, it's a student-led program in partnership with our community, where students are able to participate, work, and lead. We have more detail. I'll let Dave speak to some of the detail about the actual pathways and the different things that we're doing there with the hands-on.
Thanks, Chris. And again, thank you, Ms. Mayor and Councilmember that showed up to our grand opening. It was a big success. Chris talked a little bit about pathways. Hospitality and tourism is a big deal in the state of Washington, and especially in the Tom Water area, and we are focused on partnerships with several community nonprofits to run our students through a program to be able to be a face-to-face brick-and-mortar visitor center, something that has gone away, and we're bringing it back. And we are partnering with Experience Olympia and Beyond, and they've had a certified tourism ambassador program. Unfortunately, they are not sponsoring that anymore, so we are working with our partners to bring back a destination specialist program, so running our students through something similar to the, to the CTA program. And everybody that we've talked to are super excited about that. And so building in that component, kids becoming certified as a destination specialist. So the thought is people can walk in and ask about what's happening. We do have a unique story, as Chris Reichdahl was reading the proclamation of Retail Careers Month, that month of September, is that somebody came into the parking lot, went behind Mr. Reichdahl, and went into the visitor center and said, hey, I'm new. Can I get a map? So it didn't take, it didn't take very long to, to bring attention to the visitor center. And, you know, of course, with the signage that's up, it's all brand new. People are like, oh, what's going on over there? There hasn't been anybody there for a long time. Well, that's our goal is to, to bring that back. And I'd just like to close with Falls Fest. In our partnering with the City of Tom Water, we are going to have a booth, and we are told that we're going to be able to share that booth with council members that are going to show up. So a place for you to hang out and allow our students to, to get to know you a little bit, and then be able to share key events and things going on in the city, September 30th at the Falls Fest. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add a, add a few things. So this is, like I said, it's a pretty unique situation, pretty unique partnership, to be able to bring the community together through three organizations, like the Tom Water Chamber of Commerce, the School District, and the City of Tom Water. We think that this is an opportunity that we can take as three organizations working in the same community. Means a lot to me. I went to Tom Water High School. I graduated through the Tom Water School District, and to be able to come back and serve the community that I grew up in, and to be able to create, create something for this community and for our students is quite remarkable. We were looking at hundreds of students, like we estimate approximately 300, about 350 students by the end of the year, by the end of August, will participate in this program, one form or another, through work-based learning, through our partnership with the, with the chamber. So the partnership with the chamber and the school district in that building is both virtual and physical. As we gain, as we grow the chamber and grow partnerships, we're growing opportunities for our students to be out in our community, doing community, paid community service and paid internships within their graduation pathway. So it's just, it's going to grow as those of you who saw today, the crowd that showed up, had the dignitaries that did, and, and Chris Reichdahl reading the proclamation that the governor wrote was, was a great way to kick this off, and we're looking forward to a great future.
Great. Thank you. I do see one question already. Councilmember Jefferson.
Thank you, gentlemen. This, this is exciting. This is, this is what we need in this region. So I understand that you are school district employees, not a nonprofit?
Yeah, correct. Well, yes, both Dave and I work for the school district. So we work, I'm the director of CTE Career and Technical Education. We have 40 staff members. Those are those classes, the hands-on classes that kids can get those real work experiences. And then part of what CTE does is we bridge the gap between industry and, and careers and school. So this is the opportunity that we have that I, that I, there's a lot of people who believe this is truly unique, the way it's set up with the chamber and the school district and the physical and virtual hub of the Retail and Visitor Center. It's a benefit to the community because it is a visitor center that people can look to. I mean, that person that came in today Googled it and found it and showed up and just marched right in there and found her map and was going around Tom Water doing her thing, and we look to do that in the future. So, yeah.
Excellent. Real one, one more question. So are you gonna partner with our colleges in case for advanced degrees for, you know, SPSC, St. Martin's? So is there a plan for that, or is this just high school students?
No, that's, that's a great question. So students in, like I mentioned, the Tom Water Works program, where they'd be able to go to community service for the younger students that really haven't quite got their feet wet in the, in the workforce, 15 or so, so they can build their resume, build some work skills. Or it's an internship where they can go with a career pathway. Those, those are credit-bearing experiences, so they earn worksite learning credit, which is also a dual-credit college credit with an articulation with a different, but CTE is right, it's, it's, it's a way for students to achieve something that direct employment or post-secondary certification or degree. So it's, we partner with colleges. Yes, ma'am.
Good. Excellent. Great. I love it. Thank you so much.
Great. Any other questions? Councilmembers forth out.
It was great today.
Whoops.
People there and to see that building being used and just, so my question, you were talking, this is unique, right? That no other school district or this is really very unique for our area that you are doing this now?
Now, we believe it is. The way it's set up, I've worked for Tacoma Stewo District for many years and for Pualip, and came here because I had the opportunity to replace somewhat of a legend in my position that helped start this, right? And then on day one, I inherited Dave in this building, and what are we going to do with this thing? So let's create something very unique. I inherited a, a position as a board member, and I proposed to them, what, what would this look like? What makes the Tom Water Area Chamber of Commerce unique to other chambers? I mean, any member that's a member of the Tom Water Chamber is going to be a member of the Thurston County Chamber. I met with them. We've met with all sorts, Economic Development Council. We've met with all sorts of different kinds of people to try to put this together and, and, and make it available throughout our region for people to, willing to partner. And so the, the, the great thing is, if you, is, is the stipend piece, so students can actually, any student can sign up and eventually through the Tom Water Works program, be able to kind of pick and choose what work experience or what path they, what they want with the, with the hundreds of partners that we're going to obtain. And we've already got so many partners. We've got sponsorships. We've got grants coming in, so it's a, we're just ready for it to take off.
Thank you. It was really impressive. Thank you.
Councilmember Jefferson, did you have another question?
No, I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Councilmember Jefferson is excited, just like we are. So you had noted, Chris, that credit deficient and low income. So how are you identifying the students? Is it proactive on the student part? Do you have counselors? Do you have?
On the back.
Nominated, recommended?
Yeah, on the backend of our student information system, we can identify those students, and it really is, you market it to all students. So you set up, this is, the initial program for Tom Water Works would be a pilot program. And so what better way to pilot a program than to identify and work with students that are most in need? And so that's, you market that to students, and you set that up as far as criteria in the, in the application process. And you work with counselors, yes, and, you know, you just, you send out the network, your network and try to recruit those students to participate in the program.
Right. Are you able, has it been in discussion as you move forward of maybe the stigma or the shame of being called out for being low income or the most in need, that people might not want to do it because you're targeting, but do you know what I mean? Like?
Yeah, oh, totally. Yeah, that's, that wouldn't market it that way. Just, yeah.
Right.
So that's, that's a backend decision on it, but it really is something that I've had a lot of experience with in Tacoma, in starting what was called the Jobs 253 can with Mayor Strickland, now Congresswoman Strickland, that we started that, and that is exactly how we set it. We did say, you know, this program is, is for credit deficient, low-income students.
But you're, you're being proactive and intentional of who you're reaching out to.
Yes.
But not marketing it, oh, like you're in need, so we're gonna help you.
Correct.
I love that, though.
Yeah.
But that's, a lot of people aren't doing that, right? That equity piece, and what does that look like? So I love that idea. I think that's awesome.
I would just like to say, share that it's just another tool in the tool belt for our counselors. So as they're going through and they're evaluating and assessing if they're on in their cohort to graduate on time, it's another option for kids to get paid, earn credit, you know, keep them busy during the summer, etc. So just, you know, the backend, the data is important, but, you know, marketing it with the counselors to share with kids when they come in.
Councilmember Jefferson, I see your hand is back up. I think this one is a re, raised hand. Am I correct?
Yes, yes, you're correct. Gentlemen, if you can come back in a year to share some of that data with us, that will just be amazing to see. Can you do that for me, please?
More than happy to, more than happy to. I believe as this partnership grows, I think there will be continual data sharing to see how we can improve. We are looking for partners to be able to give advice, to, to give us a different maybe lens or perspective and say, have you thought of this? Have you done that? Would you, would you think about incorporating this? I mean, we look at this as a school district, as a chamber, and as a city, right? What can we all do to work together to improve the future, our future? I mean, we are dealing with the future workforce, and we are dealing with our kids in our community, and that's what, you know, we're so passionate about, and I think everybody in this room is as well.
Excellent. So what do you need? Excellent. So what do you need from the community right now?
Uh, just to be aware, we, we're, you know, to, we're, we're growing the chamber and we're growing the opportunity, that, that grows the opportunity for students to participate in these activities. This is a recognized visitor, visitor center with the city. And to, just to continue to grow that partnership and to, and to grow the Tumwater Works Program. And you know, we're, we're working with, with, with folks from the city as we speak right here, that we're working towards that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Great. Any other questions? I really appreciate it. I really enjoyed the event today. It was great. And I think that we will have a lot of opportunity to have further discussion then. So, and I look forward to seeing you at Brewfest or in Fall Fest.
Yes. Thank you very much. You know, we understand that it was even proclaimed today that we are sitting in the presence of the, the best mayor in the state of Washington.
Yeah, I have to say Chris Rechdal did kind of do a shout out today. Yeah, it was, yeah, it was kind of like, made me blush a little bit. Yeah.
But we appreciate the time to be able to, and we, we just look forward to partnering with the council in the city of Tumwater and to be able to take this to what, no heights. You don't know what you're getting into until you get into it. And we're, we're knee-deep in right now and we're ready for it to take off. But thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Do we have anyone online for public comment?
One person.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and go to the person online for public comment while we're getting, oh. Uh, go ahead.
Graham Clumpner.
All right, go ahead. Three minutes. Uh, state your name and your address for the record. Are you there? Uh, hello? We can't, we can't hear you yet. No? Okay, so we'll, we'll come back and see if this person can get their, get it resolved so that they can go ahead and do the public comment. In council chambers, we have Taylor Werner, Werner, Werknar. Uh, go ahead and come to the podium and it's limited three minutes. We have a.
Thank you. I'm Taylor Werner. I'm a recent transplant to Tumwater Hill. And I'm a union electrician, single mom. I've got a high school age son. And yeah, I recently attended the open house for the community to give feedback on Tumwater's climate element. I appreciated the ideas put forth for Tumwater and the turnout was fantastic. The participation from members of my community demonstrated a high level of concern. As the mother of a son who is certain to live through far more instability than I've ever lived through, whose entire generation is profoundly struggling, it meant a lot to me to be in a room where people were taking the problem seriously. But I was more inspired by community members than I was by the city. The quantity of resources that Tumwater is channeling towards climate work is respectfully not enough, not commensurate with the scale of the emergency we're in, from my perspective. I did not get the sense that the city has sufficient staff working on climate or that the city is prepared to take drastic steps to protect community members by spending on climate as if it were the highest conceivable priority. We are lucky to live in a place that's relatively insulated from the worst impacts of climate change. Nevertheless, our community is not at all insulated from economic, social and political crises that are precipitating as a result of climate inaction. And as temperate as the Pacific Northwest may be, people in our community will die as a direct result of the climate crisis, as many in Washington State did during the heat dome in 2021. We are living in a unique moment when federal grants are available for cities to take action on climate. Olympia residents can upgrade their homes with heat pumps without adding financial burden to already burdened families. And this is funded by IRA grant money. During heat waves or intense wildfire smoke, heat pumps and air filtration systems literally protect against death. Tumwater could provide them. I believe we need a World War II scale mobilization response to climate change. And sorry, I messed up my notes here. But if, if you believe that we need a World War II scale mobilization against climate change, which I do, why not work on a plan for full electrification? I met people at the open house who genuinely understand the stakes and are giving all they can to solutions. But I'm worried that the city sees climate as a political box to check instead of an imminent existential threat that is unparalleled in human history. I want my home city to be a place that sets the standard. We have an opportunity to model for other cities what truly meaningful climate action looks like. Please hire more people, get grant money. I would love to see a plan for full electrification. I would be obviously beyond proud to work on a project of that scale and historic importance as an electrician. And I think that's my time.
Thank you. Uh, next person on the list is Dave Nicandry. Name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Dave Nicandry, Tumwater Hill. I'm always proud also to state a member of this council from 1977 to 1987. So I brought a talking stick tonight. With all the wind and heavy rainstorms last month, I thought I'd head down to the oak tree and, and get a talking stick. This is the, this is the biggest one I could find. So unless the city's cleaned up some bigger sticks. This is my talking stick. But actually, perhaps a snarky as that is, I'm actually here to praise, to paraphrase Shakespeare and Julius Caesar. I'm actually here to praise City Hall rather than to criticize it. Coincidentally, today in our neighborhood over in Tumwater Hill, there was a city crew working through the neighborhood, pruning trees, cutting limbs that were over, over streets and sidewalks obstructing traffic. And I thought, well, that's good. That's sensible. That's prudential. Some of these trees are really big. They're really tall, 200 or 300 feet. They kind of loom over houses. And I'm grateful to be able to report that none of them were cut down in their entirety. They were just simply pruned back. But more particularly, um, I have a Juris Doctor degree, but it's actually an honorary degree from Gonzaga. But I've actually talked with attorneys. And when this whole thing with the oak tree down by the airport first came up, I was talking to an attorney who's expert in tort law, I think it's called. And he said, if there's so much concern about that tree, why don't they just put up a sign that says, in effect, proceed at your own risk? If the city did that, it'd mitigate any potential liability by 90 or 95%. So I'm here to commend the city for taking, again, a prudential step, minimizing risk, precede your own risk. I do several times a week admiring that tree. And I, I think that's, I don't think that's, as someone who's interested in preserving the tree, I think putting up that sign, if that's what the city thinks is the case, you're again, taking, taking a prudent step, minimizing risk. I'm all for that. So I'm here to commend the City Hall for taking that, taking that step. And by the way, I really, I enjoy coming to these meetings because like you, I really enjoy these community presentations. Like we'd had tonight on the, the animal control and, and, and I saw that new building. That's my, that Starbucks near that new building is where I jam. I got that expression from Councilmember Dahlhoff. You don't have to look any closer to the clock, mayor. I know my time's up. So thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone. We'll see you next time. Take care.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next person on the list is Pamela Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, Pamela Hanson, PO Box 14521, Tumwater, Washington. Um, in your email boxes, I was able to send you the pictures of Historical Park. And when the lake was drained, when the river was lower, like I promised at the last city council meeting. So you'll be able to see where that pipe goes into the river at Historical Park. Um, I had to split it up into three mail, emails. I apologize for the file size. They're detailed pictures. The video I can get to someone at the city this week because it shows a better view instead of the screenshot of where that is. And there's a multitude of pictures that I took. So if you have any questions, just email me. Um, the, the oak tree, um, the court date is Friday for setting the bond amount. And from what I have read, um, I've decided that I hope that the judge rules for a $200 bond amount instead of the, the very extreme amount that the group cannot pay, admittedly. Um, so as everything moves forward about the decision of the tree, a reasonable bond would be nice so that the tree would not be able to be cut down until everything was resolved. So I would just like to give you that input. Lastly, I'm going to recount my Friday morning coffee. As I pulled into a retail establishment in Tumwater, I watched a person on a bicycle move away from a person in a wheelchair that looked like they had two hospital bags, the, the string bags. Very well-kept, but silent, bearded, white male in the wheelchair, being pushed by someone with a ball cap behind the bushes at this retail establishment. To my left, a dark car did not pull into the stall beside me, but pulled in and shone its lights on me, on my car. Then the gentleman that pushed the wheelchair behind the bushes walked back out, came to the passenger side of my car, tried to open the door and then leaned on my car. So I'm in my car, worried about the gentleman because I don't know why they pushed him behind the bushes. And if anybody knows hospital bags, there's usually a motion that goes along with it. He went through some trauma possibly. And I'm not saying he was from a hospital, but it looked like it. So I was worried for him. Went inside after I popped my head out of my car and asked the gentleman, are you looking for someone? And he said, this isn't Rick's car. And then he proceeded to lay on my car at the passenger door. So I went inside, told the ladies.
Three minutes.
Yeah. Tumwater Police responded. What I'm told is that they provided a meal to this non-verbal, non-ambulatory male and took care of him. So thank you to the Tumwater Police Department. Thank you to the pilot truck stop. That was a terrible situation that that elderly gentleman in a wheelchair was placed in. And if it was patient dumping, that needs to be addressed with the hospital, a hospital, wherever that gentleman is, because there is room probably at the rest program at Interfaith Works. There's been empty beds. If they say they rejected him, and I'm going into a scenario and I thank you for the time, but this is real important because if it happens again, it's another burden on the Tumwater Police Department, the retail establishments and the fire department transporting. And that's a lot of money. It already took two officers. So I hope you look into that with the rest program, the hospitals, with the police department. That's as far as I'm going. It's my, my, my little experience of trying to get somebody help and less tax dollars wasted and, and public health and safety. Thank you for the additional time.
Thank you. All right. Did we get the person online back?
Graham Clumpner, you're allowed to talk if you're there.
Are you there? All right. So, um, if, uh, just let them know if they're having technical difficulties, they can send an email. So that would, that would work just fine. So. All right. So with that, we're going to now move to our next agenda item, which is the consent calendar. Uh, so do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Fall second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Council, Councilmember Von Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. All right. The motion carries. With that, we have approved the minutes of the city council meeting for June 4th. Uh, minutes for the city council meeting of August 20th. Payment vouchers, Resolution R 2024-014 for surplus property, right-of-way agreement for Jason Herrera for Belmore Street property. Israel Road to Linderson Way Pedestrian and Bike Improvement Project Fiber Optic Agreement with Washdot. Amendment number 16. That's been an ongoing project. Uh, 2023 Pavement Maintenance Project with Mills, Miles Construction, uh, increased the change order authority and audit engage, engagement letter. And that came from Budget and Finance. So now we will go into council considerations and I believe that we will have city administrator Lisa Parks and are we also going to have our finance director? So I will turn it over to you.
Actually, I think Troy is leaving this one to me, but if he's online, he can certainly help out. So I do have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. And I apologize, the distance isn't quite enough to keep me from having to go up and down. So I'll apologize in advance for having to use my glasses periodically. So I'm coming to you tonight after having gone to the Budget and Finance Committee with a recommendation that the council approve this recommendation from, or request from the executive department. Um, the Budget and Finance Committee, however, felt like it was really important for the entire council to consider this. So we are here this evening. So this request. So this request is basically, the, the context for it is, is threefold. So we've had difficulty recruiting and filling Austin's position, the Economic Development Program Corps, uh, excuse me, the program manager position. We've been, as a result, managing a lot of workload, particularly associated with the Brownfield Grants. That's primarily fallen on Mike Matlock and the Community Development Department. And Austin was great in getting our grants and getting us up and going. And we had agreements when he left. And then we got consultant agreements and now they're working. And now there's a, there's a lot more work than, than when Austin left. And then we have some resource constraints in the executive department in terms of having time and capacity to be able to get to a variety of different projects that council members and, and the community have identified as being really important. So we've basically come up with a strategy that would help to address all three of these issues. Um, two components of that strategy require council action. So the first step in our strategy would be to fill an existing position that we have in the Tumwater Municipal Code called the Assistant City Administrator. Um, the idea would be to move the oversight and management of the city's economic development programs into that position and, and have that position do, among other things, um, oversight of boards and commissions, legislative policy tracking, strategic initiatives and lots of work that could help alleviate the resource issues in the executive department. We would then like to create and fill a new economic development coordinator position. So not quite the development manager, but a technical, mid-level career person who would be supporting the Assistant City Administrator in a lot of different economic development programs, but specifically would be emphasizing the work associated with the Brownfield Grants, whether that is working on grant administration, grant writing, coordination, collaboration with the consultant team. Um, and then internal as well as external coordination, collaboration with stakeholders and partners. So then the third piece of this, uh, uh, would be to, as a result of all of this movement and, and change, is to just affirm and confirm what the FTE count is that's associated with the executive department. So again, the, the idea behind the Assistant City Administrator position, um, this does not actually require council action, but we felt it was important in the overall context and the strategy to talk about this with the council as a component of this strategy. Um, they would report directly to the city administrator. They would be a member of the management team. They would have this. They would have this economic development oversight. So um, in talking with um, for example, Councilmember Agave talked about at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, um, what, what would this person do in relationship to the EDC? So they would provide staff support, for example. They would be coordinating and collaborating with the EDC. They would be doing a lot of business outreach uh, to the community, the business community, figuring out what it is that they need uh, in terms of business retention, um, business recruitment, those types of things. Um, and then uh, providing some policy and legislative coordination. That's another task that Austin did well, very well, uh, coordinating, collaborating with our lobbyists and making sure that we understood uh, where we, um, where we uh, were standing in terms of the legislative priorities. Um, and this person um, position would be able to do that as well. Um, oversight of various programs. Uh, we've got several issues related to boards and commissions, the, the stipend uh, requests, the um, idea of putting together an equity commission. Um, this person would be um, in an oversight role, ensuring that those boards and commissions had adequate staffing uh, resources and those types of things. Uh, and then there would be a role for this person to supervise staff, in particular, the economic development coordinator. So uh, this salary ra, uh, this position currently sits at the grade 76, which has the monthly salary range that's identified on there. Then the um, uh, the new, the council, the required council action would be to create this new economic development coordinator position. It would um, be a direct report to the Assistant City Administrator. Um, they would support that position in um, all of those economic development activities that I mentioned. But in particular, they would have these brown, the Brownfield uh, redevelopment um, uh, projects as their primary focus. So there's a lot of work associated with project management, whether it's um, managing the consultant team, um, coordinating with both uh, EPA as well as um, uh, Washington State Department of Ecology. Um, a lot of internal coordination with uh, various departments, as well as working externally with um, our partners who are interested in looking at the overall brewery redevelopment site, for example, or coordinating, collaborating with DOT on the, the DOT property. And then grant writing, so truly uh, leveraging the great work that Austin has done to bring these initial grants for Brownfield redevelopment to the city. Um, being able to really leverage that work that he did previously and bring hopefully more grants to uh, to the city to allow us to do uh, good outreach. Um, if you could uh, clone Alyssa Jones Woods, uh, Wood with somebody who has Brownfield redevelopment experience, that's the, that's the type of position we're looking at. Somebody who's mid to entry level, entry level to mid-career, highly technical, lots of experience. Um, and the proposed salary range is at that same grade as that position. Um, grade 54, which has the salary range of 6,049 to 7,368 um, uh, per month. So this does require council action. Uh, we're, anytime we establish a new position, it requires council to both establish the position as well as the salary range. And then the issue with the FTE count, so in 2025, there were five positions in the executive department. It was my position, the executive assistant, uh, communications manager, and then two community engagement specialists. In early 2024, when Austin left, at his recommendation and at Mike's request, we were moving that uh, economic development manager position into the executive department. Um, and then um, at the end of 2025, where we are today, we would um, basically want to affirm that the total number of FTEs uh, directed towards or accounted for in the executive department is seven. That would be my position, um, the executive assistant. Um, sorry, it looks like my block, my box got um, cut off at the bottom. But it would include all of those positions that we had in um, in, early in 2023, but then adding the Assistant City Administrator and the Economic Development Coordinator. So we are asking that the council approve the new position uh, with the title um, Economic Development Coordinator and that salary range as identified. And then confirm the total FTE count for the executive uh, department to be seven.
I see a question, Councilmember Jefferson, and then I'll go to Councilmember Dahha.
Um, yes, Lisa, thank you for the update. But my question is, why will this be more attractive to job seekers? And what was the main challenge to, you know, why we couldn't hire um, for Austin's position? So, so the challenges.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do believe this, um, doing this will make the job of the economic development oversight at the city of Tom Water more attractive to a wider range of, of candidates. Um, it, it attaches to the uh, it, it's a, a task that can be accomplished by people who are in the mode of looking to be potentially a city administrator or city manager in the future. Um, so it's an opportunity to really broaden the pool from which we can um, pull applicants um, that can do not just the economic development, but they can get involved in a lot of the other uh, program work that a typical Assistant City Administrator or City Manager position would do. Um, in terms of the recruitment of Austin's position, uh, as we have struggled with many other positions, we struggle with salaries being competitive in our market. Um, and uh, we did a fairly extensive recruitment process, process. We had five to seven applicants that were at least minimally qualified. Only two of those were in state. The remainder were from quite far removed. Um, so we went through a process of interviewing the first two that were in state, and they actually were local as well. Um, we actually offered the position to one of those people. She currently um, is working for the state in a really cool position uh, with um, uh, working with creative districts across the state, and she chose not to take the position. Um, and then by the time we offered it to the second person, um, he had already um, taken another position with a different uh, entity. Um, and so um, in the process of trying to reevaluate all our, our alternatives, um, uh, collectively, we talked about uh, this particular strategy and decided that this would be um, uh, a way in which to not just find uh, the replacement for Austin, but to cover a lot of the work that he had identified on his way um, uh, back to Southern California as being a need anyway. So Austin had identified the need um, in his exit interview for um, having another person to be able to do specifically the Brownfield redevelopment work.
Oh, thank you for your clear response.
You're welcome.
Uh, Councilmember Dahha.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you stated seven people applied, two were in-state, five were out-of-state. Can I circle back with an email with you because someone who had applied for that job never heard back from the city? And they live in state and they're local. So I'm wondering where that got.
It probably was a minimum qualification issue. So HR, when people applied, there were more than that who had applied. But there is a, there's a minimum qualification based on the job description and the classification. And the seven that were given to me as being qualified were the seven that I mentioned.
Thank you for that clear uh, background information. Is there in that process, a step to actually tell the person that they didn't meet the qualifications? Because they heard nothing. They have called a few times and emailed and did not get a response back.
I did not have any calls directed my way, but I can certainly check with HR and see if there is uh, a process that they have for responding to all of the applicants.
Because even if they don't meet, I think that gets around in our community that they never heard back from Tom Water. And I feel like that's the easy fix to go, hey, what happened during our break in August? Like, what happened? So can I do an email to you and you could?
Sure. Uh, I'll, and I'll check with Michelle, and she can, she can help me understand what the best practices are for the.
Awesome. Because even if, just for people to get a response, I think should be the bare minimum.
Sure.
So to not hear anything, well, it's no bueno.
Sure.
All right. Thank you. I'll do an email.
Awesome.
Great. Uh, Councilwoman Swarthout.
Thank you. Um, realizing how rigorous the, uh, it was to, to, to find you. So is that the type of position? Are we going for the headhunter? What does that look like then?
No, it wouldn't. We wouldn't do that. We would recruit as we've recruited for, basically for um, Austin's position and other, you know, we're going to be going out to Phil Mary Heather's position. Um, we have implemented, and, and I um, can't speak to the specifics. I could certainly get back to you. But we have implemented, the HR department has been much more proactive in terms of our uh, recruitment and advertising strategies for different positions. Um, they had a presentation, for example, I believe a week or so ago from LinkedIn about, um, we, we're utilizing a bare, a bare minimum picture of what our actual uh, opportunities are in terms of our advertising on LinkedIn for different positions. So um, it will be a lengthy position, uh, excuse me. It will be a lengthy process because we want to make sure we get the right person in, but it's not intended to be um, uh, uh, an executive search.
Great. Any other questions? All right. I am interested in a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we establish a new position titled Economic Development Coordinator with a two, 2024 salary range, 6,049 to 7,368, a grade 54, and confirm the departmental FTE count for the executive department as seven.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Swarthout, seconded by Councilmember Von Holtz. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. All right. Now we are going to go to committee reports, and the first one is Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Agave.
Thank you, Mayor. So for the Public Health and Safety Committee, we are meeting on September 10th at 8:00 AM. And uh, for our agenda, even though it's only one agenda listed, we uh, I'm assuming, or given, given what I, what I know, this one discussion is going to take us a, a while to, to go through. So we only have a one agenda, and that is Police Strategic Good Plan Discussion. That's all I got.
Great. Thank you. Uh, next one is General Government Committee. Councilmember Altouzer is excused this evening. Uh, so I think we can probably go ahead and have him report on that at our next meeting, unless one of the other. Oh, your meeting is next week. Okay. Well, that will be perfect. That will be perfect. Uh, Councilmember Swarthout, uh, Public, um, uh, yeah, Public Works Committee.
I want to thank uh, Councilmember Altouzer for chairing the August 22nd meeting for me. Um, I will be chairing the Thursday, September 5th meeting. Uh, we'll be meeting at 8:00 AM. And on our agenda, we have a grand agreement with the Department of Ecology for the Pioneer Park Restoration Project Amendment One. And we also have an inter-agency agreement with the Washington Department of Commerce for state home electrification and appliance rebate programs. See you guys at eight.
Great. Uh, and then budget and finance, we just discussed uh, the topic for budget and finance. And um, do we have another, we have another one scheduled, but I can't think of what it is at the moment. I can, it's not, it's not right away. It's like, wow, too many meetings. So, yeah. Um, so we'll now move to the Mayor City Administrator Report, and we'll start with uh, City Administrator Parks.
Thank you again. Um, so uh, just, just fresh off the presses today. So uh, Councilmember Agave probably has not gotten an update, updated agenda schedule. We are going to have one other agenda item on the Public Health and Safety Committee um, on September 10th. Um, we are going to have a, a presentation on, from the fire department on their staffing models and how they um, hire people to fill different positions. Um, it's a very unique um, situation, and particularly with our, our upcoming uh, contract negotiations and pending um, opportunity for adding an additional medic unit. Um, uh, as well as moving into our budget season, we wanted to um, provide uh, Public Health and Safety with sort of an update on how, on their staffing models and how they um, schedule people and uh, the difference between people versus positions. And uh, it's been a real learning experience, and I've been grateful for it, and we have great firefighters. So uh, Chief Crimmins will be there uh, to uh, provide that uh, update on uh, the 10th as well. Um, again, I mentioned in my Friday update, we're um, planning to hop right into budget workshops over the course of the next several work sessions. Um, and we would like to hold those in a hybrid format, uh, similar to what we did with the Planning Commission joint meetings that we had earlier this summer. So you will have an opportunity to attend those in person if you'd like. They'll be at, around the table at the middle, in the middle of the room here. Um, and those, uh, currently the budget work sessions are scheduled for the 10th of September, the 24th of September, as well as the 8th of October. There are other items on those work session agendas, so um, the other uh, presenters and people may be um, uh, um, virtual as still, but um, we wanted to make that option available uh, to anyone who would like to take um, that option up. Um, and then lastly, just an update, the, we had mentioned that the Israel Road Project has begun. It is moving right along. Uh, they are going to begin paving here soon. Um, and um, then they'll move to the south side, this side of the roadway in terms of the sidewalks. So that project is moving along, uh, going fairly well. We are having to have some pretty direct conversations with the school district, but our staff is really, well, they know each other very well from last year. I'll just say that. Um, and then uh, Linwood Avenue, that project is also underway. Um, of between uh, Lake Park and Sessitna on the south side of the roadway. Um, they are going to be adding sidewalks, and so there are going to be some trees that are going to need to be taken down. So you may see that um, in your travels here in the next uh, few days. Um, and if you have questions about uh, the bid specifications in terms of what, if any, trees will be replaced there, you're more than welcome to reach out, and I will track down that information for you. But just wanted to give you an update on those two projects.
I think Councilmember Kathy had a question.
Yes.
Hi Lisa. Um, one thing I wanted to comment on is uh, you're going to have that kind of possibility of roundtable discussions for the budgets and so forth. I just wanted to make a request for the um, the microphones and the miking for that. It was very difficult uh, to hear people around the table, especially if their backs were turned. And just, just the logistics of how there can be better, um, you know, hearing for all of us.
Absolutely. I will have IT and, and um, everyone work on that. Sure.
I hope it's not a big deal, just.
Nope. We'll, we'll get it. We'll get it taken care of.
Few adjustments. And the other thing I wanted to say is I wanted to compliment you and thank you for your Friday updates. I think that those are very good, and um, it really is an update and keeps, keeps me anyway updated, and I'm sure other council members. And um, thank you for taking, adding that to your extra time to keep us in the loop. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, and, and you're most welcome.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Um, so my update is just sort of going to be a report on the intercity transit authority meeting that I attended on August 21st. Uh, one of the items, and I'm, I'm sure we will be discussing it at, uh, in the future. Uh, they actually, we voted and adopted a advisory committee program stipend program. Uh, so they have now changed the Citizen Advisory Committee bylaws uh, referring to the stipends. And I believe that that will start in January, uh, which will be great. Um, they're, they have a 20-member uh, Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, we also got an update on the uh, state rodeo. Um, and uh, so it's interesting because intercity transit has been the grand champion for seven years in a row. Uh, this time that they were runner-up. So uh, we, they've always set the bar really, really high. Uh, so they took second place in overall maintenance, second place in a 35-foot coach, uh, and third place on body over chassis. So um, they are still doing great things and set the bar really high. Uh, with that, I'm going to move to council rep, council member reports. Uh, and I will start uh, actually in council chambers. So uh, Councilmember Swarthout, do you want to start?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I haven't had any committee meetings, but I have done a few things. I did attend the um, the meeting that we had at OSHO as far as the. I did attend the, the meeting that we had at OSHO as far as the Climate Group, and that was, that was really an interesting session, and I really appreciated the turnout and the staff's participation. It was, it was a very good session, so I appreciate that. And Double ACP went to that meeting as well, and there was one more thing, and I can't remember. So I went to the grand opening today, so, thank you. I do have TRPC on Friday, so we'll be there.
Councilmember Dahlha.
Thank you, Mayor. This week, Emergency Coordination Center Workshop, which is tomorrow morning, Thurston County nine-one-one, also Thurston County opioid response task force. And then coming up is Public Health and Safety, General Government, and some other ones, so more updates next time.
Great. Councilmember Von Holz.
As alternate, the Inter-City Transit Authority Meeting, and I will be attending Public Health and Safety next Tuesday at eight AM.
Great. All right, Councilmember Jefferson.
I had one meeting, the EMS meeting on the twenty-second of August, and there are three highlights from that meeting. Our EMS Gala is the twenty-eighth of September from six to eight PM at Indian Summer Golf Course. And we also talk about the need to move to a bigger classroom, because we have a lot of students. So they are going to move to the HR Training Room at the County atrium. And the significance of that is big room, thirty-plus students now, which moves me into discussing EMT instructors volunteer. And the ratio should be six to one. Right now, they need more volunteers, and pay is an issue. So right now, they're doing the reimbursement form to pay, but to attract more instructors, they're talking about salaried or stipend, however, we're going to pay them more, this way we can get more volunteers. Planning of the EMS conference is to be determined, and that's my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have both a report and a confession, and a thank you. My thank you is to Brad Medrude. Lots of us always have compliments or thank yous to him. But I was covering for Michael at the RHC meeting and was unable to get into it with video, and so I signed in through audio, and I listened to the whole thing, and, and Brad was there, and he stepped right up and, and became our very informed person that always is that way when he, when he speaks at that meeting. And the main conversation was what we have already talked about here is the, the Black Housing Initiative, and I think that we've seen that come through already in our emails. So I apologize for not making it in person. And also, you notice that I got as far as, in getting my new background, I got as far as getting Tumwater off my background, so we're moving in some direction now. And tomorrow, I have the Solid Waste Advisory Council.
Great, thank you.
I'm not going to leave, even if I don't, I'm not branded right.
Yeah, we do have new backgrounds, so we'll, we'll assist on getting the new backgrounds, so.
Yeah, I need a little help.
Councilmember Agabe.
Thank you, Mayor. So my meetings are in the future. On Monday, in the evening, I see the Joint Animal Services JSCOM. And then on Tuesday, I have Public Health and Safety in the morning, and I believe we have a work session in the evening on that day. And then on Wednesday, I see Transportation Policy Board meeting in Olympia in the morning. And then on Thursday, I see the Disability Board meeting in the afternoon. So that is my next week.
Great, thank you. All right, I do not believe we have any other business this evening, so with that, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.